Have to call this meeting.
All right, time to see a full board here tonight and let everybody's feeling better. So, let's start with a through all of previous minutes. We have a motion.
Motion till first minute. It was broken.
I did have one change. Our special board meeting started at six thirty, not six. On the twenty nine. Okay, anybody else have any other changes? All right, so then all in favor of accepting a minute of the single change?
Aye.
Aye.
In the booth? All right, perfect. I do see that we have a visitor here. Did you? Wanting to work out things today?
Good evening, what Gabriel St Pierre Chair of the Fall Mountain Regional Summit is here. I'm here because of the many committees we discussed today, and I have an interview.
Thank you. Good morning. We're not so far away. I know, we are very far away. Uh, with that, I open it up for Dr. Spence, give us his report.
Right, thank you. Our good evening to the board, good evening to our viewers at home, um, and a full month community very large. Um, happy Monday. So, we can transition. So as with with everything we do, we want to start with our mission and vision because I believe this centers the work around our school district. Why we're here and 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 what we hope to achieve, so that will always be there. I wanted to provide an overview of the hundred day entry plan. That plan is now complete. I officially have been here for more than a hundred days, working this capacity. The uh, yeah, too bad for that. Um, the October superintendent's brief is is forthcoming, we're gonna get that out. The um, the the last now that hundred day plan, we um, spent just meeting with the community. We did some meet and greets with Walpole Violence and uh, the Full Mountain Region High School. It's actually a picture right there from the violence community. Um, in addition to that, our work to meet with the power school representatives, I'll talk a little bit about that later. The Keen SAU twenty nine, they hosted us for lunch. Still in conversation with the Keen State Educator Preparation Office regarding uh, place man affair professionals and other pipelines that we hope to establish. Another win, we actually concluded our education climate survey, and we're currently looking at the data. I appreciate all the stakeholders that took the time to respond to the survey. We got a pretty decent response rate, so I appreciate that. And we're coming off the heels of our best practice conferences on school operations, finance and business leadership. That we happen to have um, we went September and just had one this October, so. We've been pretty um, busy working to realize that plan, and now we are at the stage where. The data points collected from that plan, we I promise will provide a report to the board that kind of outlines. Our findings regarding the organization in critical areas, so we're working to get that done. Um, I share the data with the board regarding that to resolve for the education climate survey. So the board has that and you'll get the report soon, we're working on that this fall. Just wanted to continue and let the alert the community and let them know there is a new tab, the superintendent's corner. And I'm actually working to change the picture, since I did all this process, I'm working to change that, I guess he had shots. If you wanna look at the superintendent's brief to to um, get an update regarding our labor at the SAU, you can go to that corner where you'll see the board presentations. As well as the superintendent's brief that outlines with the direction that we're moving in as an office and what we have accomplished in those particular monster highlights. Today, I had the pleasure and privilege of going to the Full Mountain Education Summit. Where we had teachers and folks from state edge working to teach um, to share best practices across the district. I want to congratulate the professional development committee that created a space for teachers to share out those best practices. I personally had the opportunity to attend a few sessions that I thought were very um, timely um, regarding the the data that we received in educational climate surveys. So things around um, discipline, rule cause analysis, and then also increasing rigor, higher order uh, thinking questions. It was a privilege to be in those spaces and just hear the discussions that our staff or um, faculty and staff were having to help better improve our system, so. And that's just one snapshot from there. So we had a discussion about our uh, system, our current system and power schools ability to provide timely and relevant student information. So we utilized our grant funding to purchase a student management system that will allow third party data to enter power schools such as iReady. And other um, applications that will provide myself and building principals and teachers with a holistic view of student achievement. So it's essentially a data warehouse, it goes into one system, and then we can look at the very pre-grabs that tells us what's the average daily attendance, et cetera, student achievement. And so we adopted this student management system. And subsequent to this meeting, we'll have a follow up about how we're using application right now, there's some training that they're gonna offer us. And um, we hope to um, roll out with that more aggressively soon, but right now, we're just gonna learn how and what ways we can use the system and how it can um. Yeah, they how how user friendly it is, so. We're in those stages, but it will be um, a good addition. Prior to that, we were entering the data manually. Which is very cumbersome and time consuming. This will allow us to get the data in one snapshot that we can then use to inform instruction and other um, priority areas for the district. This was um, this I I I found just traveling throughout the district. Um, under the guidance of Major Bill Maynard, it's our students were able to fly in the air. Our JRT, JROTC students were able to fly in the air and go to a military base and um. We had an onslaught of pictures, looked like it was a great experience, and I just wanted to salute the JROTC folks for providing our students with this leadership experience. And also some real life training as to what it looks like to be a part of the military. Um, from what I hear was great, and I just wanted to make sure I highlight that work being done in in this organization. Brendan, can we hit it one more time? I don't know why it pops up then. So um, I want to congratulate all of our student athletes, these are just two of the games I went to. We during homecoming week, we were outside, it was raining. This was a video, I wanted to congratulate the man on his great set of legs he had, just getting through, just running through. The video was supposed to play, that's what I was working through with Brendan, but um, remember that running back was on this particular play, if you're watching it. That young man has a great set of legs. Um, I also wanted to give a shout out to our girls soccer team that I've been performing and everyone who's participated in the fall sports. Um, I've tried to make my business to get around to some, I was able to capture these two and hope to see some more, but um, just wanted to congratulate them. And our immense uh, varsity football team, congratulations, that was a very good game on. Real Friday night light conditions, raining, mud and everything that you gotta think of, so great job, great job, ladies and gentlemen. We also um, was invited to lunch with uh, to the SAU twenty nine and Keen to discuss our career and technical um, regional agreement. Um, some of the things that we're looking at is the allotment of seats for specific program areas for our Full Mountain students. As well as uh, the calendar synchronization, so there are some parameters that change from the state's guidance regarding. This agreement, and we're sort of working through that, so there will be subsequent meetings with the team that you see in this picture. But this was just to spark the conversation, what are some things that may be of interest regarding this agreement? I don't anticipate um, I don't anticipate ma- major changes, but those were some of the critical things that we're looking at. The amount of seats that our students have in critical or programming areas based on the need that we're seeing. So there'll be follow up conversation, but they were pleasant, they had us there for lunch, it was a joyful experience. Uh, COVID nineteen, we're we're not uh, really um, done with this unfortunately. We have um, seen an uptick in the district in regards to people um, contracting the virus. We are observing past practice regarding COVID related illnesses and taking our direction from the CDC. And now turn over to our business and ensure.
Okay, I just wanted to provide an update on the DOE twenty five and MS twenty five status, that we are in our second um, extension. Um, it's been a little challenging in the office with the staffing or lack thereof to uh, move forward quickly. Uh, my goal is to try to have it released uh, by the end of this week, middle of next week at the latest. Um, that should still allow towns to set rates in the number. Um, and so um, in talking through how these documents factor into the the tax rate setting process. We are reporting out last year's activity, but that information is used to um, populate and. Calculate the apportionment, which is then used for the tax rate setting. So what they do is they take um, the budget that was voted on and passed in March. And then they have the estimated revenues, which I'll update with them with the um. When I complete the the DOE twenty five, then I can report out on uh, money's going back to return the tax um. Of being returned to reduce the tax rate. Um, and then they'll know how much revenue we need, and then they'll apply the rates from the apportionment schedule to those monies. Um, and it is uh, Dr. Spence mentioned, um, we recently attended the Best Practice Conference in Concord. Uh, for school operations, finance and business leaderships and um. We um, were able to um, meet with some of the state representatives there. Um, and have some important face to face conversations. Um, and then uh, this last week, we also attended Bradley Kitter Law Conference, um, so we were able to obtain. Information on updates on the statute statutes and laws and how they impact us. And then I'm also very pleased to announce that we have a finance manager that starts tomorrow. Um, so that's going to be awful.
Fantastic.
Um, and then the next slide. Wanted to give you a snapshot of um, where we are at this point in in our finances and our expenditures. Um, so ideally, we would have enclosures there and remaining balances, um, we're working on tightening up our systems because um. You know, if we have expenditures such as SRO, for example, we know we're gonna incur those expenses for the year, they should be fully encumbered. And that's not been the process in place, so we're working in working on strengthening those systems so that we can uh, provide a more complete book.
This is a good step, I appreciate it.
This is, it's very helpful to see, well, kind of small, but. We just, we were just saying we need to get that arrived with. That's all I have.
Okay, yes, and and so now we would like to transition this.
Questions? So when do you think we might be able to get um, an Excel spreadsheet printout of the budgeted operations for this year of today?
Uh, my goal would be for the next full board meeting, which would be whatever, but again, we're looking on strengthening those. The sys- systems so that I can feel like we're providing accurate information.
Okay, cuz we're gonna need him as soon as possible for the budget committee.
Uh huh.
Um, and could you provide that for fiscal year and last year as an Excel spreadsheet, please, for what you're tightening up for the DOE? Um, my other question is for the superintendent, um, did we find out? Because you're gonna be setting tax rights here shortly, did we find out what's going on with the um, additional funds that were. Budgeted for Walpole for the ghost position?
Yeah, so we're gonna discuss that, should, we we're gonna discuss that shortly, but yes, I'll just not bridge and discuss that, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Brendan, next slide. Now, I would like to um, transition to our community liaison, we'll provide an update, she is with us remotely. Alice, it's all you.
Hi, Alice. Hey, can you hear me now? There we go, okay. Thanks, we had to do a little bit of the um. That Zoom stuff, so our first monthly newsletter went out, we had eight hundred and fifty views within. Um, forty eight hours, which I felt was pretty impressive. Uh, and when we attended the meet the superintendent nights, people communicated that um. They mentioned that communicating the with the district when they don't have a student in the family, it was really important to them. So it seems like we were on the right track with doing this newsletter. Um, we're also have been requesting alumni updates, and those are coming through. Um, we've received eight of those and they're gonna continue to come through, so we can share stories about what Wildcats are up to these days. Um, I've been really focused on the Fall Festival, as you might expect, that's happening this coming Saturday. And just a few things that are happening with that are the McCullough Shepherd Planetarium Show. So uh, they're coming out from Concord with their inflatable planetarium, and they're gonna do six shows throughout the day. Um, the Chili Cookoff, Open Barn, Open Greenhouse, JROTC students. Um, their section at the festival is a graded assignment. Uh, so they have two students that are in charge of their their portion, and that's gonna include camouflage face paint and um. Uh, challenge as well as a showcase, so. So altogether, it's gonna be a really great event. Um, I'm gonna be a little bit bonkers this week and uh, Misty's been amazing help, but it's gonna be a cool day. Um, and one thing that I wanted to make sure that you're aware of is I have a small caseload where I work directly with families to connect them to resources. Uh, and I'm working with our new social worker to kind of figure out. How we can work together as as she comes along. So we toured some um, community supports in the district and got to know them so that. She can make referrals or she knows what's available. Okay, next Brendan? Thank you. And don't forget to visit the community resources section on the website. Uh, there's lots of different places to get to that now based on the feedback. So you can scroll all the way to the bottom of the homepage, or you can find it in the district links. Or as you look at the list of schools, uh, community is the last school on list. Uh, content is continually being added and refined, and this is the uh, the page for the signup for the for the newsletter, and again, that's. It's, the idea is really two way communication from the district and people that are in our district but aren't necessarily current families. Okay, do we have any questions for me? Oh, hey, forgot about this one, uh, this is the the poster with some of the events, I've got. I wanna say forty five uh, vendors are primarily crafters and hot sauce makers and. Um, some community supports are coming like upward bound from Keen State will be attending. Yeah, Iron Kettle is coming out, um, so they're gonna help take people from one section of our campus to the other. And uh, we're looking forward to it.
And I just wanna pick you back off of, Alice, thank you for that report. Um, so, one, A to the Fall Festival, I think this is gonna be a really great experience. They had such a short amount of time, both Alice and Misty worked with the challenges and central of the staff, the the shortages to develop this. In such a short amount of time, I'm really impressed with the work that they've been able to do to get vendors and organize this thing, so. I wanna give a shout out to them, we've been encouraging families, community members to come to this Fall Fest event, it is literally for the community. There's no mountain we can't climb, but especially while we're eating chili, right? So come out to the to the Fall Fest. Um, it is also this community resources tab, just want to echo sentiments, that was something that we heard from a lot of community members is how do I get involved? How do I find information out, so this is a added responsibility to add it for Alice to sort of monitor and create a space for them. To sign up and get updates about what's occurring, so um, very good, and just speaking with the alumni association is something that they want to be connected to and find out ways to get the information. About what's happening home, even the ones that live like they're miles and thousands of miles from these people away, they're still, you know, interested in what's happening in the district. So, we're still working with the um, the the websites, we move some things around, but right now, this is the structure. And um, and again, thank you, Alice.
I am so excited to see all the good things coming through this district, I don't know how anybody else feels, but it. The energy is fantastic, and I appreciate what's going on very much.
Thanks, and this is just our last laugh of the night, um, again, we're encouraging our alumni to come out and to share their stories with us. So that we can feature them on our website, I I think that was the um, I think the the greatest privilege was just speaking to alumni that came through the system. And all the different areas that they are, you know, working in their respective organizations, vocations, et cetera, and where they're living. I know that they are working to better track alumni, where we are geographically within the country with professions. And maybe possibly move into some sort of mentorship, so. This helps us and it'll also help them, um, and we appreciate everyone who's sent us a mission thus far. And and that concludes this superintendent's report.
I got feedback on the uh, the a lot of the uh. Alumni uh, there was something that happened, a reunion that happened at the at the um. No, there was a reunion at the uh, at the farm in what in Al- in Atworth. Um, and um, it it, they said that it went very, very well. People were, people were really happy with it, apparently there was quite a few, there were quite a few people, quite a few alumni that came back for it, and the word was that it went very well. It's pretty exciting, after fifty some years of graduating classes, that we finally have an alumni association that is active and excited and doing things. And there is a lot, um. My understanding is they also made a thousand dollar donation, which included a new sound system. For the um, football field, as well as another donation to the football booster, so it's a pretty exciting time. Anybody else had any other question for superintendent or for Lori?
Where a new sound system for the football field will be remarkable.
Uh huh.
I think that's exciting.
Light years ahead of where we were. Um. All right, I think we're good, is it okay uh, with the board if we add our student representative report in this section?
Yes.
Can you be ready?
Um, hi, I'm Patrick Manning, I'm a senior in high school, and currently sadly I am the only school board rep. Uh, we are looking for a new member, we just haven't gotten anybody yet. Um, currently in the school, nothing much has happened academically, we are doing pretty well, I have not heard much from fellow students. Uh, we always get those every once in a while complaints from students about everything, but. Are than the people who like complain, it seems to go pretty well for everybody. Um. And athletic wise, everybody's feeling pretty good, I mean, first time in nine years, we just won the Bernard Cup, so everybody's pretty happy about that, and. Football team also won, so. Yeah, that's basically all I got, but hopefully more to go.
Football team won against who?
Stevens.
Thank you.
Silver crown?
It was a great gig. We just do it very well this year.
Yes.
Four and one, right?
Four and one, the only loss was against Mad Dog at the Hall of Honor.
Game Friday night, against Interleaks. Peered, so.
You there, B square?
Oh.
You there, B square?
Yeah, even if it's raining.
Even if it's raining, so. Well, thank you, Patrick, I look forward to learning more about what's going on. All right, well, that brings us to our other administrators here, we asked Cory Leclair, Trail sounds principal, to come and give us an update on what's going on in her school, there's a lot. So, we're excited to hear it.
Thanks. Um, we have been visiting Charles Town Middle School, and I. Will just highlight a few of the areas that we've worked on. So last year, the board voted to um. Essentially reconfigure the Charles Town Dentists area, and we moved fifth grade into middle school. Moving fifth grade into middle school required us to do some building renovations so that um, one, they could actually all fit there. And two, that we also were able to address some of the practical concerns about fifth graders with eighth graders. And how we were going to operate within our building to ensure the best possible experience for all students, so. Um, I have a series of photos, the sort of the the before and after, so when you take a building that is very old and has had. Um, closet spaces and such just filled for many, many, many years. You end up with all sorts of things, um, and we had enough things to fill our first floor main hallway, basically. So some of those things, we were, we actually did distribute to other schools that needed them. Um, when we just had more file folders than we would ever consume in our one building before the actually dry rotted. Things of that nature, masking tape, um, lots of masking tape, we were able to share with others, we did that, those things that kind of go bad. And um, we spent some time just sort of. Calling out the areas that we had in our office and making them more usable. So this is what our office looks like today, you can actually walk into the main office, you can actually access the closets, it's labeled, it's organized, it's welcoming. Um, those of you who've been here there have noticed the difference between the before and after. Um, and it just allows all building operations to operate more effectively and efficiently because. Like when your brain is efficient and operational, the rest of your body can move smoothly, and that's kind of what we have here. And so our project literally includes knocking down chunks of concrete wall. Um, and we had somewhere between, I think, eight and ten different vendors in the building this summer completing different portions of the. Project in its entirety. Um, we had a closet upstairs that was used for storage of a variety of items. And we needed to add bathrooms upstairs, we didn't have enough bathrooms in our building anyway, for the number of total students we had. Having fifth grade come to our building, we're able to actually um. Isolate fifth grade to our top floors, so fifth and sixth are on the top floor that where they operate, and then seventh and eighth kind of operate on the the bottom floors. So there's very little intermingling of students of across all age groups throughout the instructional day. But we really wanted to make sure there are bathrooms on that third floor for students to be able to access, and that included knocking down some walls. Um, and creating smaller closet spaces on either end of the bathroom. Um, and two single stall gender neutral bathrooms in the middle. And so the um, picture on the left is kind of looking from one closet all the way through, and you can see the um. The metal studs there and the concrete weight that we had to knock through to create, and then um, what it looks like today is the picture on the right. Where we walk into a little alcove and there's two very lovely operational single cell bathrooms um. That hits up their canisters and staff. Um, and sort of the before and after of the concrete wall versus additional storage space for that classroom.
Cory, are those bathroom, those bathrooms are handicap accessible up there?
Fully handicap accessible, um, and very lovely, vented, that was another thing, so we have to. Um, I know those things seem like.
Oh, no.
Like that little details, but we had to get extra structural engineers in place to ensure that the venting was done properly. Um, they needed to be vented, and and so we have um. New. Equipment up in our attic space that we didn't have before. Um, in this process, adding another uh, group of students to our building, we really wanted to maximize our space, so we had throughout our building. These. Just sort of strange alcoves, the cutouts on the left side here that you see, and uh, they weren't used for much, I think they may have had lockers in them at the time. Uh, but those had long been removed and and they were not functional, so we did fill two chunks with actual lockers because we needed to add. Um, I think we have sixteen more lockers to our third floor to accommodate the number of students we have, and then we had shelves built in all of these. So particularly during the sports seasons when students, um, you know, in football season, students have a second bag, their football gear. In baseball softball season, they tend to have a second bag with their baseball softball gear, those were littering our hallways and becoming trip hazards, we now have safe storage for all of those. Um, on on both floors, the the main and the upper floor, where these alcoves were. Uh, we moved the library, so last year you might have remembered having a school board meeting in our library, there was a lower part and an upper. There was a lower part and an upper part of the library. Those are now two separate instructional spaces, one full classroom and one room. I'll talk about in a moment. And so we took our library from upstairs and instead of rebuilding all of those shelves. We moved all of those shelves to a downstairs room. And reassembled them into those little bit of a jigsaw puzzle because we need to mark every. Of course, none of them are standard width or height, right? Every single one is slightly different. So marking every one of the shelves so that it goes back in the right unit, all that. Maggie Kyle at the library, she was tirelessly this summer painting the library and getting it. Finished effectively, but then also making sure all the books got back into the library. And on the shelves, we had, you know, we had an entire week of just fans running to try to reduce the humidity. So the paint would dry and harden properly before we put books back on the shelves. Things I didn't anticipate in preschool school, but. Our library is a great space. It's bright, it's open, it's airy, it's first floor accessible, so really easy for the public when they come in. There's a huge pile of bean bags in the middle and that is also very lovely to run from the door. Watch yourself in the middle of, you need to, you know, a fun moment. Not that I've done that. Maximizing storage space in the back of our science classroom. Had additional shelves built there. Our science, one of the things that we were able to accomplish with our restructuring is. Now that we have fifth through eighth grade, we have fifth through eighth grade articulated curriculum as well. And so. Our teachers spent time this summer working on their curriculum to ensure that they were not only prepared to add fifth grade curriculum to their content area. But we also made, shifted our teachers to be content specific. So now our science teachers are teaching science all day long. Whereas before they were teaching some ELAs and science, um, who knows what depending on the year and depending on configuration. And that made it really challenging for someone because they weren't able to dig into the content as far as they'd like to. And, and master that with their students. So we needed some space in the back of our science classroom because Mr. Stevens particularly. Has lots and lots of bins of gross things that kids really love that they explore. We had to build walls. So we had a classroom upstairs that had two offices as part of the classroom. And historically, that's been a special education room, which was fine because it was used for small group. Instruction regularly and to have two office spaces there for related service providers made a lot of sense. But we needed to reclaim that space for a fifth grade classroom, a fifth grade home room. And so our fitness six grader rotate through this room. And there was enough space to be able to put in a wall. So the classroom is separate now from those offices. We moved IT into one of the offices because we needed their larger space. For instruction, for specialized instruction, actually. And we gave related service providers an office space in there for them to use. So that's speech generally. In our mental health worker. And he though, as the most, and so we had to build a wall to separate the classroom. From, and so you can see sort of like there's now a little hallway. There's a depth at the end of that little hallway because we need every inch of instructional space we can get for small groups. And we were able to have students pop in there. Learning, the teacher was funny. She was, I can look like you're learning, what I mean? I try to, I, I tend to distract them, but not that. So we now have that space segregated off. And then we also did that with our library. So the picture on the left is the bottom half of the library. The picture on the right is the upper half. The wall that says grammar in the middle is, didn't used to be there. That's a new wall added to separate those two spaces. So again, we have a fifth and sixth grade classroom space on the left side. And on the right side, the upper part of the library is now our reset room. And I'll talk about that in a moment. And then the last piece is reclaiming space. This was, this store is off of our. Stage and you can see the new construction, the lighter wood there. Above that, we are now able to. Contain all of our cleaning supplies in one closet space that neither in the back of the locker room before, because that was the space that they had. So we built this closet and not only does it prevent some of the air from escaping through the top of the stage area. But it also gives us that much needed storage and it also prevents. Students from inappropriately accessing the crawl space on the top of the stage. Not that anything's bad, but. They get creative sometimes. So maximizing all the space that we have. And then we wouldn't have been able to do this this summer without these folks. So. Griffin Construction, local construction company, they put aside major projects to. We have people onsite. They were always respectful and wonderful, working with us. Helped us with whatever project we needed and really we couldn't have done any of this without them. While Masonry did a lot of the work, just making sure that everywhere where we cut through concrete, we then had to reinforce it. There's a lot to that that seems like. It's much more complicated than just what it, what it seems like on base value. High Ridge Plumbing and other local companies, they were able to install our bathrooms, figure out where they had to go to make sure that we were able to. Not only follow their architectural instructional plans, but actually get things functional and working. And Bill Byd. He is our facilities director. Bill worked every single weekend from, I think, the end of July through. At least mid-September, just making sure things in the building were done and his crew bent over backwards to make sure things in the building were done. Because we had a very, very short timeframe to plan and execute this scale of a project. And without that, it would not have been ready for students to enter. We were a couple of days before the start of school and we still had a building that looked like a tornado had gone through. Just because we were that focused to getting everything done. So that's our building. The other piece that is really the foundation and framework of what is different about. Charles Town Middle School this year is our MTS SD model. So this is our multi-tiered system that supports our behavior. This is how we. Structure our behavioral, our, our response, our adult response to student behaviors. Okay, so this has a lot of work involved with being trauma informed. Focusing on social emotional learning, ensuring that we're supporting. All aspects of child well being, so that they can learn effectively when they're with us. And so a piece of this is we had staff, so we started in November of twenty. Two with conversations around needing a different behavioral model, needing a different response. Because what we had in place was no longer effective for the staff and students that we had in place. And parents were struggling as well, families. And so we started with staff conversations back in November. We engaged in, in family conversations. We did some surveys. We engaged again with students and with staff. And a long process with a lot of conversation resulted in a, a leadership team this summer working to tweak and finalize. Our model and what we had in place. And so the community expectations we have for students and staff both. At Charles Town Middle School are safe, engaged, respectful, accountable, and responsible. So everything we do now is based off of this. This is directly from the Charles Town community. So the Charles Town community is again, staff, students, and families. All of us together are part of this. We were very intentional not to call this our values or beliefs. Values and beliefs in the school system often conflict with the values and beliefs within the home. We are not here to have those battles between the school and the home. But we absolutely can have expectations for our conduct and our behavior in school and we can support students at that and staff at that, right? This is for everybody. And so that was an intentional shift in our language because we understand. That home is home and school is school and we want to partner. But we, we also want to make sure that we have our expectations for school and we can stand on those. And so we now have built a behavioral model around this and the tiered response. So for our tier one, this is what we do for all students. We used to have a model that reset on the trimesters every twelve weeks for a thirteen year old brain. That does not work. We have a model now that resets every week. If we have students who blow through this every week, then we have a tier two and a tier three response plan for them. Last year, I calculated it, we had well over eight percent of. Eight point eight percent of our students on a tier two or tier three plan. Right now, we have three point six percent of our students on a tier two or a tier three plan. So we've, we've, we've cut it by over half in terms of how many students need more intensive support because our. Tier one support, what we do for all students is more clear. It's articulated to students, to families. And it's more consistently understood and practiced by our staff. Our staff know if A, then B. And, and we can execute that more consistently across all grade levels. Our students rotate between at least seven different staff members every day. So we all had to be on the same page. And so far, that's paying dividends for us because we've cut. Our, our numbers in half for those students who need more intensive support. A piece of this is our reset room. So we created this space where students. Can self-select. So if they under, they feel like they're having a rough go, they're gonna have a, a hard time in class or escalating. Or they had a rough night or they came in off the bus in a, in a rough way, they can self-select to go to the reset room. Proactively based on what the student needs. Students can also be directed by a teacher proactively to go. They come in off the bus, you can read it all over their face that something's not quite right. Hey. Do you think you need to start here before you come to class? Get yourself re, reset. Be ready to learn and then you can transition to class. And then sometimes students are directed here because of four choices that they've made. And this is now a, a place that is more consequential and requires some additional work on the part of the student. To figure out, okay, I've screwed up. How do I repair this? What can I do differently that I can be a better contributing member of this community? We're leveraging this with all sorts of students. We have a person who scans this room that has been part of the budget since before I got here. And she has additional training in how to support students with behavioral needs. And so far, this is working really well. For kids because they feel that they have a safe place to go. It keeps that, that situation from escalating in the classroom unnecessarily. To sort of that point of no return. So we have a place, okay, let's just cool off, whether it's a staff member or a student. We need to cool off, we need to reset and we have a place for them to go and do that now. That's not the main office where they get a lot of attention and there's a lot of confidential information. There's a lot of stuff going on. So it's not there, which is great. Part of our model is also positive reinforcement. So every week, if kids are doing what they're supposed to be doing and they're good. Community members and meeting community expectations, they get to participate in what we call Fun Friday. Or also known as Fundatory Friday, forced family fun. It's fun and mandatory. So it's fun, right? So, so far, we've done a, you know, some type of war type games. We've done how tall of a tower, I'm gonna build with newspaper and some masking tape. And we have a variety of different things planned. We are doing a door decorating for fall themed thing. Last week and this week and kids have gotten to pick out that. And so it's instead of a, a war of. Instead of being recognized, we're doing the right thing every twelve weeks or recognize we're doing the right thing every. And they also, if they get recognized for doing the right thing, they can get put into a drawing. Every week, we pull a winner from the drawing and they get a fifteen dollar Amazon gift card. Or a fifteen dollar gift card to shop, shop donated, most of those to us because they're amazing. And so we're able to recognize those students who, who are doing what they're supposed to do. Yes, it seems silly to recognize kids who are doing what they're supposed to do, but if that's the behavior you want, that's the behavior you reward and that's what we're doing. And staff are expected to recognize at least one student every single day. At least one. For the first month of school was three to five kids every single day because we really wanted to. Be bold with recognizing what we wanted from students. And so we gave a lot of positive reinforcement right off the bat. And now it's at least one student every single day. So with thirty something staff members in my building, we're recognizing thirty kids a day. For doing the right thing. And that's also, that's an automated email generated to go home to the family. They get to see that their kid was recognized for doing the right thing. They get immediate communication, positive feedback. And that's really been, been good for us as well. And feeding into our climate and culture. So we are working on improving climate and culture in our building. Another thing that we built in every week is an enrichment block. So we have students participating in no bake baking, meaning not requiring an oven. Karaoke. We had different kinds of bracelets that they were making. Regular baking, all sorts of things. We have fiber arts, we had boat building. We had a jogging club or a walking club. And so every four weeks, those are shifting. So we, this next four weeks starts on Wednesday. We have, are offering coding. We are offering. Different types of, of word activities. We put in a grant to the Bonant Education Association for guitars because we have staff members who'd like to offer guitar lessons every week. So it's a whole host of different activities based on student interest and staff interest. Both were surveyed and then. Matched based on what people want to do. And so we're building this into our, our, our everyday, our every week. And we're also having students recognize staff. So we have a group of students. They do the morning announcements every day now. They're writing our weekly newsletter. They're recognizing different staff members. You can see the posters on the left. This featuring and highlighting so that the whole student body can learn about our staff. And then we did this activity where we asked staff, like, what are your favorites? What's your favorite candy bar? What's your favorite? I forget, I think, type of drink, favorite color, different things like that. And so. We had a staff member say, hey, can you just have that book of favorites like near the staff mailboxes? Because if so and so does something really nice for me and I want to recognize them, I want to be able to go to the book, figure out what it is that they like and get them something I like. If that's Reese's Pieces, I want to go get Reese's Pieces and just shove it in their mailbox with a little note that says, thank you, you really helped me the other day. And so we're very responsive or we try to be to. The, the asks from staff and from students about how we recognize other people for being good humans and being contributing members of this community. We did a pay it forward day this fall where we went out into the community. And so on the left side there, there's a dugout down at Patch Park that is blue. I sent fifth grade humans to Patch Park. I got blue Smurfs back from Patch Park. We then had to spend forty minutes cleaning before we sent them home. But they had a great time and all the dugouts are blue. So every wood structure at Patch Park, I think, is now a shade of blue. And I still have some children with that shade of blue somewhere on their body, especially less noticeable. So we went to Patch Park, we went to the cemetery, we went to the library, the historical cemetery. We worked with the Conservation Commission and did trail cleanup. We worked with the Sullivan County Conservation District and did hickory nut pickup. And then we did some projects around the school. So we spent our early release day doing community service out in the community. We have some projects lined up later this fall for leaf pickup. And then we are going to be working with the four at number four in the spring when they open for the year, cleaning and helping them open. So our whole school, right now, the plan is for the whole school to go down to the border number four and our spring community service day will need to open the four. Which brings me to my next picture here, which is our display case that we have now. We're collecting artifacts and relics from years. And so we have a nineteen thirty-three diploma. In here, which is pretty cool to see, a nineteen sixty-four year book. Yes, that's the yearbook that has Proust and Fisk in it. And we have some other clothing and paraphernalia. Don't look too closely at the Charles Town. Jacket on the right hand side when you come to my building because there's a little bit of spelling issue. So we'll work on spelling as we move forward. And then the other thing we're doing here at CMS is honoring athletes of the week. We have a new athletic director this year. And just trying to build engagement with our student athletes and recognize, recognize, recognize when we can. It seems a little bit over the top sometimes with how much we are recognizing kids and. But this is another way that we are doing that is with our athlete of the week. And every week, it's a new student from one of our different sports. And just talk a little bit about how this person. Why this person is recognized and, and what it is they've had to contribute to not only their team, but the greater community at large. So I have an amazing staff at CMS. We are having a great time this year and we're having a lot of fun. So I have an amazing staff at CMS. Um we are having a great time this year and we're having a lot of fun and a lot of laughter. And um I also hope a lot of learning. That, you know, that's kind of the goal. Um but it's a very different vibe in the building this year than it has been before. And I invite all of you um to come visit at any time, stop by um. Because we'd like to have you there and we'd like to show you all that we're about. So keep them busy.
Thank you.
I'm a little overwhelmed with all of this, it's so much, it's such a short amount of time. And I appreciate it.
So if you. We try to go back to the minutes, which we don't pick long, we don't do big long minutes, but. There was such discouragement last year, not only from students but staff and. To see the turnaround in such a short amount of time, when you walk in that school, it's completely different. It's completely different, not only from last year, but from two years ago, three years ago. The staff are all involved, the staff wanna be there. They're engaging, not only the students, but parents that walk through the door. It really is a completely different school. And to have that turn around so quickly, it it's. It's unbelievable, really. So, can't thank you enough.
I have a little more silver twinkle than I had before I started.
No, it's like going to a volleyball game. So you used to go to a volleyball game, it was very, the gym was very, it's volleyball game, right? It isn't now just a volleyball game, it was like. The big Charles Town banner across the table, across the scoreboard, there's announcing going on. It's just a, it's it truly is a different vibe, and if you if you really haven't been there. You you have to visit it because it's it's incredible, it's incredible.
Great.
And hopefully Bill got some time off.
Yeah, at least a very big pat on the back, because he was there all the time and made it happen.
Well, he wasn't just there, let's be honest, he was at the primary, he was. Very focused on CMS, but he was also at the primary school and then the other schools throughout the summer trying to get their projects done as well, so. Kudos, kudos to him. I'm I'm not sure when he slept.
Now, we've had this added to today.
Um it's it's just a documentation, but the request was was on me with them, is that what you're talking about? I can't see that, I'm sorry. It's on the consent. It's just the doc, it's just the backup.
Okay. Um, good, then I guess we are at that base in this agenda. Does anybody wanna take anything off the consent agenda? But I'll take a motion to accept it, asshole.
I don't want to take it off the agenda, I have a question. Is this the position that's taking over, to answer Jamie's question earlier? Is this the position that is taking over uh extra funds?
Why don't we take it off? Um, so uh Kevin has asked to take off the unbudgeted request of individual paraprofessionals being lawful. So we'll. Dress that in a moment, um which leaves just the personnel. Um and so since it's the only thing. On the consent agenda left.
And then there needs to be added to that, correct?
I think so.
Running for the finance office?
It's on there.
Oh, is it?
My, I gave you paper copies, I updated it. Copies, that's okay. Do you have anyone in front of you?
That's okay, I I trust you, put it on the paper.
Yeah, I did. Oh, and it is, it is live on the agenda as well, yeah. As soon as everybody could get another email prior to the set.
Through the consent.
I'll say in that.
I would like to just make one comment on that. Um I see that we have David Russell here. Oh, I feel sad about that, but um he's just retired after thirty years. So I'm gonna send a shout out to him. Um one thing we did see in the data was that. People appreciate what our schools look like, and um I think he's been a big part of that here, and so. I'm gonna just send him up uh with our appreciation.
Thank you for pointing that out, that's been a long time. Absolutely.
Okay, so with that, we accept the personnel appointment.
I move.
A second?
I'll second.
All in favor? All right, and so we do have a request for an unbudgeted position, so I could invite our Walpole area principal. To give us a little update and uh.
Um so I'm here to um request uh for an individual paraprofessional at the Walpole Primary School. Um we had a family move in um over the summer. And they informed the school about uh emotional dysregulation, physical aggression, groping. So that gave us, you know, a little time to try to develop a plan, see um what we can do. Um we contacted the previous placement to uh con- confirm the severity of the behaviors um as well. And then the staff in the district BCBA developed the behavior plan, requiring significant data collection and support, so we have. All kinds of data to, you know, talk about, you know, we broke it down for every fifteen minutes for, you know, out of the seat behavior. Duration of out of the seat behavior, unsafe hands, any notes to go along with that. And it was requiring two to three staff members at a time to help support the student to really make them be successful. Um we had to adjust the day, what that looked like for them as well. And then currently uh we're utilizing the special educator, school counselor, um and then the the special ed parent to to cover um. Day, and this aesthetic, this setup is pulling the resources from other important roles within the school as well. Um so. In order for this student to be successful, we have to have somebody with them at all times. Um you know, we've tried different things and we've continued to have to work on these each and every day to help them and. Um we we we're making gains, we're finding out what's working for the student, um but this student really does need um. Full attention and support throughout the entire day for this to be successful.
Thank you.
I think it's already been asked, Kevin asked the question, all right.
That's that's what we'll be using it for.
I guess, I'm waiting for an answer on it.
Is a student under an IEP presently?
Not presently.
So this request is not IEP-driven?
Not yet, it's currently going through the process. They've already had meetings and stuff like that as well. With the families. Yes.
So the director of special education is involved then? It's, okay, and are all your other paraprofessions filled at this point in time?
No, no, we have um. We, in this building, we currently are in the process of hopefully hiring um one. Um but I I am down uh four paraprof- four paraprofessionals at the Walpole Elementary School. I currently really only have two, not including the leave program, so one person's covering the fifth grade three days a week. And then the other person is covering covering sixth to eighth grade, uh and that's one person for all three grades. Um and then at North Walpole, I have three um paraprofessionals.
So you have how many open positions right now?
Uh four, five, I believe.
Do you know what the savings are at this point in time from all those open positions? I don't have that right now. So it seems as if that budget's gonna have savings already in it, because you don't have all your positions filled.
Absolutely.
So. I guess we have a decision to make on how we're gonna handle it.
Just uh just in in my travels and having a meeting with Justin, we were attempting to have our one-on-one. I was inherently observed the um the need, so I would I would support that that there is a a need. There were two educators, if I recall correctly, that were trying to um. So do the child, so that the child could um calm the child down in that process, to which I directly observed, so I understand. Challenge and the need to support that child is great.
So don't be, don't misunderstand me, I'm not saying I don't support firing a one-to-one aide for the child. What I'm pointing out is that you've already got savings within your budgeted lines because you haven't filled all your positions. So, so that's all I'm pointing out.
Oh, noted, and this wasn't a response, I'm just providing context, just in case that you all might have been looking for mine, but that was the context.
Just to be clear, this. The proposal on the table right now is that the extra money that, uh extra position that was budgeted, well. Not budgeted, but round out in the budget, this is what's gonna come, this is the position that I'll take there.
That's what I would like for it.
So as Jamie's pointing out, you may not. Need that money for that position.
That's what I'm trying to find out, but that's okay. If we wanna sit on it in Walpole and. Budget it and kick in a surplus on the other side, you know, it's not. Huge amount of money on the whole total budget, but, you know, seventy grand is.
Seventy grand?
That's right.
However you wanna use it, that's fine with me.
Um I'm not in charge of the budget by myself, I'm just pointing out. Data.
Do we need a motion to add that? Add that budget line for this position?
I think you just need a motion to allow for an unbudgeted position. And then. Basically, the administration under the auspice of the superintendent doesn't change. Walpole's budgeted dollar amount and we leave it there. In case by some chance he actually fills all his position. I'll make a motion to accept the um unbudgeted. And but, whatever it is, unbudgeted. Paraprofessional, right.
No, thank you.
So, discussion.
Yes.
So no caveat to the funding, it's just unbudgeted, so he gets more money for this position.
My understanding is.
So I have two trains of thought, one is I agree with Jamie, that if you can't fill other positions, there's money there to, if you can fill this position, maybe. My other position is, and I understand this, a move in in the middle of the year or whatever. But I have never approved an unbudgeted request that hasn't been IEP-driven. You have to approve those because it's the law. But other than that, I want administrators to really do their budgets correctly, understand the situation, but I do think that. With unfilled positions, that you already have money in your budget to cover this position, if you can find someone.
And just to speak up the other piece, like the move in and everything like that, this is also a. A very young student whose first year experience, so this is their first time coming into the school system, so that's why. You usually don't have IEPs and everything coming into it necessarily, so that's why it's kind of a little a little different for those situations. So, but I understand what what you're you're saying.
But if I could just speak to the question of IEP too, it's something for people to understand too, is that it is, it is very possible to have. A highly involved behavior student who does not need specialized instruction. Specialized instruction is what drives an IEP, not behavior. And so it is possible, it it is very possible to have someone who is. Who is academically, especially in the younger grades, because they haven't missed instruction a whole lot yet, especially in the younger grades. It is very possible to have someone who is not going to be found eligible for special education. And still needs that extra support, so I just think it's really important for. An understanding of what special education is, it doesn't mean just being able to give somebody an aid. It means specialized instruction in the academics.
I agree.
Thank you for that clarification, Jane.
So yes, to Sarah's point, then it would be a five oh four.
Then it would be a five oh four.
Correct, so let, we're coming with information, we need to present it appropriately, right?
Right.
But maybe they don't know yet.
Right.
So that's why it hasn't been specified here.
Right.
But yes, to your point, it's either five or four, if it's an individual or it's special. And and the difference there, just just for a little bit more clarification, just for for education of of everyone, is that if we have a student with an IEP. Um then it is, we get a little bit of funding from the state. For for helping, not a lot, but we get some funding from the state to help with those educational needs and should. I mean, I'm not, should it become a a a big issue where the student needs to be placed someplace else and we had catastrophic need? Um we would get catastrophic need from the from the state for a student with an IEP. We would not. Get that for a five oh, for a student with with, I stay away from the word just, but I always use it, for a student with a five oh four. So it's just two different streams of funding.
And we've been going through this process right from day one, we were fortunate enough to to be able to reach out to the previous. Um you know, daycare center and everything like that to get much information, because. If we were gathering all this information now, we'd be just starting that five oh four IEP process right now for the student. But we were able to get the BCBA involved and the specialized team and everything right from the start, so that's why we were able to. Try to get this to you as soon as possible, best support the student.
So. Uh Justin's saying he's he has five positions that are currently open and not, those funds aren't being used. So. The main decision is, are we gonna call this an unbudgeted, unbudgeted? Or do we just rely on the admin currently right now to use the unspent funds, correct?
That is my understanding.
Unearmarked, yes. I think that would be probably the correct way to. So then, because it's not really unbudgeted. There is money there, and then possibly once the IEP, if it goes through. Then it would become. Yeah, it would be. Driven, or if there is, if the IEP is not warranted, but staff, one-on-one staff is still required. And the budget begins to lower, then. Then they could always come back and ask for the unbudgeted position, correct? Well. It's kind of confusing, so. If I may, please. Um. So the budget was worn and ratified with this, whatever the number is, let's call it seventy, I don't care. Um ghost position is still in there, right, that we thought had been cut, but for whatever reason, it's still stayed. So there's money still in the budget that's available to cover this need. To your point, so if we were. Our earlier discussions about potentially moving that money to a uh to a generalized. Usage area that wouldn't directly target the tax rate for Walpole. That has a time limit, and the time limit is probably now, okay, so. At the risk of being wrong, because I have been quite a few times this year, um. I'm gonna say it's probably the seventy's gonna remain in the Walpole budget. Available for this, I would call it an unanticipated position, because the money's already there. So it just means the budget for Walpole's not gonna change.
So I make a motion to change the motion to be unbudgeted to un- unanticipated.
But that's not what it says on the reply, correct?
Because originally we had all our positions still to start the year, and we've had all those resignations, so.
Right, we still have the funds in the budget that weren't earmarked for them.
I understand that. Told to put it out there.
That's fine.
So the person who seconded the original motion needed the amendment.
The, I'm sorry.
Seconded the original motion.
Uh Kevin, I think, Sarah, I think it was Sarah and Kevin, right? I think, that's what I have.
Okay, so on the new motion, Melissa, would you read it for us?
Yeah, uh, to approve an un, an unanticipated, let's say, position. Request for an individual care professional at local primary school.
Do you have questions about that? All right. Any more discussion?
All in favor? To, I'm sorry, do we, do we have a second for his amendment? Sarah, yeah, okay. Sorry, I asked that for.
That's okay, we all did. I think I'm on.
All right. My brain's having a little trouble right now. I used to think I was going to Israel yesterday or tomorrow, but.
So, just point of order, that was for the amendment.
That was for the amendment. So, amendment is on the table. Is there any more discussion about this? Unanticipated position in my form. Seeing none. All in favor of approving the unanticipated position? Using current ones. You have no change to the budget.
We just voted on the amend, now we're voting on, now we're voting on amended.
Amendment?
The amended, the amended original motion.
Okay, so the motion was to amend the original and now this is a motion to.
The amended motion.
All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed?
No.
And I'm not knowing it because I need it. I'm knowing it because of the funding.
Yeah, that, that's fine.
All right, thank you for the good discussion.
I guess if there was a clearer way, we could have done that, a cleaner way. We could have done that. I don't know how, but I know the conversation is about the seventy thousand that was in the budget. And this just doesn't seem like it was the. The cleanest way. So it wasn't, wasn't because you. You don't need, I know you need it, but it's not, it's not clean. I don't think it's, I don't think it was the clean way to do it. It's already done. It's good.
My question, why we needed it in the first place, since the money was already in the budget, why we needed to do.
Exactly. We only needed to approve an extra position.
Correct, I saw. But we did, so.
And we did it in a roundabout way.
Right, and that's, right, that's why you would change it from unbudgeted to unanticipated. Cause you're just upping an F T E. You're not, you're not asking to spend more money than you are, yeah.
All right, fantastic. So, uh, moving on to committee reports. Uh, I know earlier this year, we talked about, you know. Maybe committee reports minimal, um, doing a little more as workshop together as a board. Uh, but it's become pretty clear with the, um. The lack of money we're going to spend and doing some capital improvement work that. We need to get information out to the public to gather more information, to work on a capital improvement plan. Um, and so I'm bringing a facilities committee to this board in hopes. That you will be in support of. An active. Facilities committee to look at the capital improvement plan and bring our report back to the board. Um, I know that the budget committee is interested in this type of thing, being partnered with the school board on this. Bringing in some community members. So I'd like to know what you all have to say.
Do we have a charge for the, this current charge with facilities committee? We used to have it. Well, there, I want you, I don't want you to follow it.
It was, it was kind of unclear. I mean, my hint is, my, my inter, not anticipation, interpretation of was that it was relatively unclear. Which was kind of why it was not. Yes, cause the last discussion was about a gym. Out across from this offer field, that was like five million dollars, but it was needed. Bound and I was literally choking on the other end of the phone. Um, so yeah, I, I absolutely think that the facilities committee is needed. And yeah, I think we need to have one. I'd like to see like their first meeting have a vision, like what is their goal? How will they go about their business? Because they absolutely, they have twelve buildings.
I think as a board, we get to set what it is that we need from them. Um, what we're looking for. I know Lori has on her. Plate this year to update the capital improvements plan, but I think that's something that perhaps a facilities committee could bring back. And work in conjunction with Lori and Bill and, um, put something together that has, um. Updated needs and updated numbers and, um. You know, to really look at it from the community's perspective as well.
I'm curious if Lori has access to her copy of if you founded these C I P that was done by Jim Chan.
I have a paper copy. I have not. Had an opportunity to dig into the electronic one yet.
So you're at least have, I do have the framework, yes. I think that Jim might be in there. I think that Jim might actually be in there. So in that, um. I think the most recent one I have is twenty nineteen. Would that be?
So to an entirely different world since then, so.
So I'm totally in favor of a, a facilities committee, but I do think that we should not vote on it yet until we have a vision. If someone creates a vision that we can then discuss. And we vote on that as part of creating the committee.
Yeah, I think that's the right, uh, direction. And so to get there, would it make sense? For us to give input, like maybe, maybe you could. Call each one of us with us questions or just a blind. You know, what do you think should be a part of it? I don't know what the best way to poll us is. But I think that that might be the most efficient way and quickest way, right? To get input on what we think the direction of that committee should help with. Does that make sense?
And we could look for other models, which other facilities committees out there, we could probably look for other models. Uh, vision statements for them that we could draw to. Does, you know, we have one?
We just, we are, we just did our. Yeah, strategic plan, we're just picking off the first year of an updated one. So I think. There may be others out there that are more broad than what we have right now in our infancy. But I could probably share some that we looked at. And there's a few in the Hampshire that are actually quite good. Um, if we're gonna hold a board, can you? Um, get input from the budget committee and what they feel, the facilities committee. Um, goal or intention should be. I do feel that we're gonna have to work directly with them, because facilities obviously is directly related to money. And. Some of the. Budget committee members are. Very knowledgeable when it comes to our buildings and our facilities and. Money as such, so.
And real world experience with buildings and facilities. So it's a resource that we should be using. Gabe, do you have anything you want to add to that?
I appreciate the discussion. Uh, thank you for giving the idea, supporting the idea. Uh, during my tenure on the school board, I had the privilege of being on the facilities committee with James. Uh, working in, in the building and it's in the. Uh, Theodore Roosevelt said, plans are useless, but planning is priceless. So, thank you for playing.
Right, thanks.
So, I should point out that both Gabe and Andy are on the board when we did our. What, five million dollar renovation?
Three, four, four, five, five, four, nine.
Yeah, plus one point five, we already had. That was just the money in the rates, right? We bought. Yeah, so it was, uh, it was great. Thank you guys.
So, do we want to bring this back for the first meeting in November to formalize? Um, which then brings us to an articles of agreement committee discussion. Um, we have aimed to work on this as a board this year, but. Things keep coming up that seem to be more pressing and. Uh, there's many in our community who believe that actually nothing is more important right now than discussing these articles and. What can be done to draw the communities together? And so. In the same vein as looking at facilities and the twelve buildings and drawing in the community opinions and knowledge. How does the board feel about an articles of agreement committee that would then make a presentation to the board?
So there's a lot of background work that's been done.
Yes.
With this, right? So like, it's not like. I don't think it's a new charge as much as it's maybe updating the charge that had been given. Would be information that already exists. So I have a procedural question. If you have a committee like this that's set. Do those meetings all have to be in person as well in Indiana, sure?
It's a governing body of the boards.
You're making it so difficult, you know?
It has to be a quorum anyway.
A quorum in person, but others can.
That's correct.
So I'll bring it back around to what Jamie said, and that was, there was an article of agreement committee. Not very long ago. I believe all of their information and all of those. Members of that committee who, who were made up of numerous stakeholders, including. Community members. Um, from all towns, everybody was very much involved. I don't think that we need to recreate the committee. I think their findings of the articles of agreement. Is already laid out. We've had it, we've got, I know we've had seen it. I think it's, I really think that the articles of agreement are. Are in the hands of this board. We need to, to review once again what that committee recommended. And then decide what we're gonna move forward on. I think if you go back to a committee discussion, you're looking at another whole year. Of where they're gonna discuss them. And then we're gonna be sitting here. We have the discussion, we have their recommendations. They're already there. What, I don't understand what a committee would be presenting to us that we don't already have in front of us.
Jamie?
If I, if I might.
I'm sorry.
I think. You're right.
And I think Alyssa's, well, Alyssa's trying to maybe.
Get to is that. With a two-hour min, maximum on our regular meetings with everything that's coming into them. Maybe it doesn't leave enough time to, uh, discuss. What the findings are amongst all of us. So maybe perhaps instead of saying another committee, maybe we need to say. Would, um, a majority of the board be available? In person to have an additional meeting or two to devote just to the discussion of the article. On a Saturday. Local or Monday night, Sunday night.
I had a, I have a question. If you, if you're not looking to create a committee. Couldn't there just be a couple of board members so you don't have to necessarily adhere that is gonna really dig into the recommendations that are already been put forward? So if there's. Two or three of you. As long as there's not four of you. That are assigned to digging, digging in and then reporting out, just a suggestion. Then you would.
I think it's already to that point. Where it's been dug into and the problem being with all of us, I'm sorry.
No, 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 go ahead. I'm sorry. No, you go ahead. I just, I wanted to.
I'm concerned that if we don't all get to hear it at the same time. I don't know, maybe it'll work.
So, I, I guess I have a question because. When we did our workshop, not, I missed the workshop this year because I can't remember why. I was, I think I was like, oh, I had COVID. That's right. Um, little, little thing, yeah, couldn't get out of bed. Um. When we did our, our workshop in the summer, the summer before this. We, we spelled out what we were doing at all of the workshops throughout the year. And one of those was to specifically look at articles of agreement. And that's what came to having articles of agreement on the warrant this year, which I felt was a hu, was a huge step forward. To address the concern that Shelley is rightly so consistently bringing up in front of us, which is, we have to be moving on this, guys. So I, I guess a question that I have is, is at the workshop, did y'all make a outline of what we were gonna do at the different workshops? At the different workshops through the year so that we could know that we were gonna talk about it?
So we did.
Okay.
So we came up with the plan that if we ran short on business meetings, because we're no longer going to do. The teacher admin. Updates for an hour and a half where they just kind of fluff over everything good that they're doing, which is great stuff. And that we would have additional time to talk about this. And, and I do think that. I, I mean, we're running out of time because what we have to have the warrant in by December, right? January, December, January, and I thought, I think maybe we thought we would have a little bit more time, but everything seems to just keep cropping up. So our meetings keep going longer than what we anticipated, but. I don't think that. I agree with what Jamie's saying and I agree with what Misty's saying. I don't think that there needs to be these big, long discussions. I think the couple of board members need to come together with those recommendations. And come up with one or two things that they're like, okay, yep. This one maybe could move forward, this one maybe could move forward, or this one maybe could move forward. These are the top three that we might be able to put on the warrant. All right, let's bring these top three to the board. And have a discussion and see which one kind of wins out about what goes on the warrant, correct?
Right, which is what we kind of did last.
And we could do that, we could even say, okay, well, we're gonna. We're gonna do an articles of agreement. We have a presentation, so that night's meeting might run until eight thirty. So FYI to all the board members, we might be going over just because we're gonna have a little bit longer discussion. About that. I'm very fearful about the articles of agreement going back into a committee discussion. Because I do not believe anything will come on the warrant this year.
What about if you, everybody has their homework, they go home, they dig through those recommendations, and at the next workshop, you designate. It to the articles of agreement and everybody's coming back with, say, their top three, and then you kind of narrow down your discussions to what you wanna, I mean.
So.
Just a suggestion.
What do we have for our October twenty fourth? Is it articles of agreement?
It's a budget. It's, it's those beginning conversations of budget.
So what do we have open for our workshop that we can do then?
Well, the beginning discussions of the budget. Could we possibly dedicate an hour to the beginning process of the budget? And then an hour or forty-five minutes to the articles of agreement if we all do our homework. Same with the budget, if it's the beginning process of the budget discussion. And we all get that information before we kind of do our homework and we come prepared. Then maybe if we take two hours to talk about the budget. I don't know, there's gonna be a lot to be said about it.
It's gonna be a, it's gonna be a really brief.
Yeah. You're not gonna have much.
And if, if this is more important, then we could. Plan in November, I mean, we're getting a little late on there.
For another meeting.
Or another meeting, right? Another board retreat that's specific to. Right, at the lake.
It is available to us.
That's a lot.
At the lake.
In the winter.
Sure.
So in order to be prepared for that, because you send us out.
Absolutely.
Once again.
Yes, yeah. Okay, so we'll plan on the twenty-fourth being a discussion on both the budget and the Articles of Agreement. Does anybody need additional copies of what was sent out from the previous two thousand nineteen Articles of Agreement?
I'm gonna send everything to you.
Please do.
Yeah.
Uh, and things like that, I don't have a full set of them, but if you happen.
We did, so that's because, um.
There.
Correct.
Okay, whatever you have.
Alright. I think she just had the folder that says Articles of Agreement, and then she just keeps plugging it out. So.
I have what I took, let's see, you can, I have my minutes, what, when, yeah.
Thank you. Alright, well, I appreciate the discussion, I look forward to, to know. Lots of ideas. Um, does anybody have any questions on the administrative reports that were sent out to us? No. Alright, then I'm gonna move on to B, which was, uh, we received a donation from Dr. and Mrs. Gravy. Dr. Gravy was a dentist in Charleston for a long, long time, I actually have no idea how many years, I mean, he has since started his practice. Um, I got a call from him a few weeks ago, um, asking if the school, the science department here at the high school would be interested in a Nikon phase contrast microscope, um, which, you know, in conversation with Christopher and with Sarah Edmonds, and then the head of our science department, they were very excited to have this, um, microscope, I have never seen it, but I understand that it does some very cool things, um, has all sorts of, I don't know, a monitor and its own, all sorts of wonderful things, and so maybe someday we'll get, um, a presentation. But they were very excited by it, and so we do want to acknowledge in public this gift, it's a value of about twenty-five hundred dollars currently. Um, when this was purchased brand new, it was significantly more than that, it is a very valuable piece. But I would just like to acknowledge Dr. and Mrs. Gravy for this gift to fall out and.
Very nice of them.
Does anybody have any other questions on it?
I just have a policy question, which I know we.
Policy committee for I don't know how long, and we haven't reached that yet.
Do we have a policy about accepting donations?
Yes, that's.
We do.
We gonna put on the thing, that new one that they just changed, what kind of, they just opted at the state level?
Yeah. I haven't, I had, yeah, I haven't been able to, um.
Is that from the school association, or they, or the state itself?
Um, this, it's a state RSA, so the RSA got changed, and it, the dollar amount, the threshold is much higher than.
Well, we haven't changed our policy, so.
That's why I'm saying we want to take a look at that. You still want to acknowledge, but you don't necessarily have to have hearings and vote and all that.
Right, um, under five thousand, we just need a simple motion.
Now higher.
To acknowledge.
Yeah, I need a motion to accept the donation of the Nikon phase contrast microscope, estimated value twenty-five hundred dollars by Dr. and Mrs. Gravy of Charleston.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Bye.
Thank you very much.
Thank them.
Yes, they're very excited to donate here in the valley.
There is, and, and we need to, are we going to? Have a succession plan conversation today? Okay.
So, um, the process should be that I reach out to, um, to Cheryl Hoffman, who was his running mate, and offer her the position, that's.
Your running mate?
No.
Um, so just so everybody knows, today is Andy's last meeting with us, he has sold his house and his.
The reinvestiture.
Where are you going?
Kentucky.
Really?
Kentucky.
You've got a spare room, we're coming to visit.
We have a board retreat there.
Right, so, I'm sure I can speak for all of us, that we really appreciate you stepping up last year and then coming back to be with us for this year, your guidance has been invaluable.
Thank you.
And many, many years.
Been fun. Must have been to come back. Um, so yeah, so in that regard, he did have somebody who ran against him, um, earlier this year, and that's what Misty is acknowledging, that there was somebody else, but I believe we have opened it up to the public in addition, when, nobody else?
No one.
How do you think you got beat, the first time around?
And that's because there was not a contested.
It wasn't a contested race.
Oh, it wasn't a contested race.
So our policy says if it's a contested race, we go back, yeah, okay. It's the first step, I don't know if she.
No, except that.
Yeah, yeah, she, that's how it should, no.
I'm perfectly wonderful with it, you know, there, this, uh, when I took over for Michael, there was a contested race, and I don't think that person necessarily wanted to read it, uh, but I don't know, as though it was just an automatic.
Yeah, when I stepped in for Scott, it was contested race, and I lost by forty points, but I still had to submit a letter and come in front of the board and have them accept me, so. I'm fine.
I'll do it whatever the board, I'll do whatever the board would like to do. You know, it's pressed in, but that doesn't necessarily mean that that's what we have to do, so how does the board feel?
Sorry.
You shouldn't be saying between the two of you. I don't, I can't speak to the board, I'm not gonna say no, if she's, because her name is Ford, and says she wants to do it, so actually having her do the letter and do the whole thing sounds like a bunch of. Did you, right?
Is she integral?
Um.
I haven't, I'm, okay, I didn't know whoever.
I did not know that this was Andy's last meeting, so.
So we need to bring it back to the.
Okay, if you, yeah, if you'd like me to reach out to her, I'm certainly happy to do that.
Strong pull, yeah.
Please do.
Check that policy first, make sure that's.
I, I think our policy does, but. Do we have an actual board policy about it, I know there's, there's RSA regarding.
There is board policy, it should be, since it happens a lot.
Because I had to keep.
Never used to, Joe.
Well, then I came along, and now it happens all the time.
My term of performance, yeah, EBE.
Thank you, Jamie.
There is an RSA too, there is an RFA that backs it up, yes. We're done so much.
Okay, well then, uh, let's move on to the treasurer's report, did everybody have a chance to take a look at it? Um. Look, there is a very nice summary right there, I really do appreciate the new process. Do you want me to continue to email everything?
I enjoy, I mean, I like getting the emails, because I can't get here to look at things while the doors are open, and I don't think they're gonna give me a key, so.
Oh, why not?
Sure, and I have an old one, but it's probably not working.
Alright, well, I want to take the most, except for our report.
No. Second.
All in favor? Alright, there, anything else to come over the board before we move into non-public?
Nineteen minutes.
We've got nineteen minutes.
Make the motion going non-public, or what are we doing?
Um, contract.
Contract?
First name. Call what number it is, I mean, letter.
Is it on the bottom of a little. Ninety-one A, colon, three.
Yeah. Did I get a second?
Second.
It's little, isn't it? Oh, yeah.
That's the best little. Word, isn't it, ever. Shelley.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes. That is so.